Good evening, everyone. We have one minute before we start the meeting. If you would like to fill out your citizen comment, please fill it out now because we will not be taking forms once the meeting starts. Thank you. It is 5:00. I'm calling the meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present, except it's Mr. Alvarez. He's on. All council members are present. We have three on Zoom. Would you please join us with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance will be by Mayor Pro Tim Wilkerson? Please pray in your own faith. Most gracious Father, we thank you once again for your many blessings that you bestowed upon us. While we act in your Son Jesus' name that you continue to bless this great nation, our men and women in armed forces and their families, our state, our county, and also our local government, our staff, and our residents. Let us all, God, in the name of Jesus, work in harmony and peace that everything we do that you might get the glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our nation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I please get a motion to approve the agenda? And we will have to use our hands since we have three council members on Zoom.
So moved. Madam Mayor?
Council member, okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes. All in favor, yes. So we have three there. A motion carries Madam Secretary, seven to zero. We will now have a presentation. Madam Secretary.
PR 23004, United Way of the Greater Fort Hood Area Presentation.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Montemar. Good evening, Aaron. How are you?
I'm doing well among friends.
Yes, good evening, Don.
Thank you, ma'am.
So Mayor, council members, city staff, leadership. There's two key parts to raising funds in the community. You gotta ask. And then the rule is you gotta say thank you. So I'm here for the second part, to say thank you. And I'll be brief, but we're in a great amount of gratitude to the city of Colleen. We know, I know, I've been here since the early 80s in the military. There's a dynamic community. It has challenges, opportunities, growth, all the good things and all the, like I say, challenging things that come with it. And you could easily say, we don't have time for nonprofit. But the city has always made time for our nonprofit. And over the past 20 years, approaching almost $200,000, excuse me, $2 million, averaging about $95,000 to $100,000 a year from the city. And a big part of that's been the city police department that gives about half that amount each year. We couldn't be who we are. We couldn't do what we do without the support of the city. And on behalf of my board, we have Leslie Hinkle in the audience that is on my board, has been on my board, has been a volunteer. We couldn't do it without you. And we're glad to be part of this community. And with that said, we have a plaque for the police department. One its own qualifies as one of our cornerstone. And I think, yes, we have. Take care of the public in more ways than one. They're taking so much.
Thank you.
And then the city, of course, because of the large amount of its contribution qualifies as a cornerstone at the third level. So are you accepting on behalf? Oh, there we go. Come on, Mayor, you know you're not shy.
I'm not shy. Mrs. Ford and her team, they put all this together. Would you please come out of your team?
Yes, now.
Yeah, they put all this together.
Yes, come on. Anyone else?
Give honor where honor is due.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. But Janelle, you and your team, y'all, you went beyond Communication Department for that. I thank you all for working hard to put this together. Thank you. Okay. We're gonna skip the Colleen Star Award. We just waiting on the individual to get here. So we're just gonna stand still. And Chief, and your team, the police department, thank you for always being a team player. Thank you. And Chief, Assistant Chief Gerhardt, thank you. With that being said, we're gonna move forward with our citizen comments. Each individual that speak has four minutes. And council, you have one minute. Ms. Anka. Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Good evening, council members, Madam Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. This is regarding Pape Dawson and Stagecoach. Pape Dawson is a great engineering company. I used to work for them. So I was extremely happy when I saw that they were picked to design Stagecoach. But as an engineer working in Colleen, I also know that they were hired by the city of Colleen to review engineering plans. And they're great. They have been great to work with. And I'm very happy about that. But the obvious question in my mind when I saw that they were picked to design Stagecoach is who's gonna review their plans if they're also hired by the city to review engineering plans? I'm very happy that they're reviewing engineering plans. They're great. I'm very happy that they're designing Stagecoach. They will do an amazing job. They're very good engineers. I even emailed Sam Dawson about it. And I got a response from him, and he remembered me. So I'm very happy that they're doing this. But the obvious question is, I mean, who's gonna review their plans? That's all. It's a fair question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for the sake of transparency, who will review their plan? Mr. Kagle.
Sure. We've hired Pape Dawson. They're reviewing private development infrastructure, not public. So our engineering staff will review those.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Forino. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Madam Mayor, a question. I just want to be clear that I'm understanding what Mr. Kagle's saying in that you're saying for the public, if it's a public project such as the Stagecoach, they're not reviewing any public. They're just reviewing the private sector.
Correct, like subdivisions that come in, in all the infrastructure in a subdivision.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Before my time begins, point of order for clarification. Would it be possible to comment after the discussion item? I would like to hear the full discussion, what you discussed prior to.
Sir, this is our time for us.
I'm asking if there's a mechanism to where I can comment once everything's out in the open.
Are you finished so I can answer your question? Sir, this is the citizen comments time. You will have to do it now or you can make a comment at another time. But it would not be done during the meeting other than right now.
Okay, well, then we'll begin my time. I mean, that right there demonstrates some problems. I mean, constantly we're to comment on things before we've actually heard the presentation, which puts the citizen at a disadvantage. I think there should be an option for that. But my comment is on this wounded warrior, whatever we've got going on that smells to me like it's another vanity project and let's just throw more public money, tax money, our money redundantly where it doesn't need to be spent. Okay? If we're gonna spend any mental health money, it should go to our police and firefighters. We already pay federal taxes to the Department of Veterans Affairs and the Department, Veterans Benefits Administration. There's no local startup that can compete with an already established for well over a century now for the Veterans Administration. Okay, there's no need to spend such money on that. That's redundant. And if we're going to fund anything, let's give it to the police and the firefighters who see things more and more on a daily basis, day in, day out. They need the support with the limited package, as I understand it, that the police and firefighters have now is woefully inadequate. And I speak of that as a combat veteran with TBI, with a pretty swing in case of PTSD. And I asked about this very topic this morning when I was at the VA, to the point of where this is money that does not need to be spent. The city is not qualified to spend this money, nor is it able to judge who is or who is not. There was a very public altercation between myself and one of the council members here who instantly berated me and accused me of being off my meds, et cetera, et cetera, and that I'm crazy. Based on that rubric alone, I say that the council and the city is not qualified to evaluate, assess, or administer any veterans' benefits for mental health or otherwise. I foresee a situation where we have many people who claim to be veterans at just about any intersection, at the beginning of every rush hour, at any given day claiming to be veterans. And it'll take them six months to figure out that these people are not veterans, and we would be wasting time and money. Okay? I implore you to that. We're already paying federal taxes on this. Okay? And I would also consider the fact that when it comes to citizen comment, we come up here and we advocate for something or against something. My calculation, the last two years, the only thing that this council has paid any heed or credence to revolved around a pet pig when it comes to budgetary spending and all that, despite how many people get up here, whether it's Thousand Oaks or whatever else come up here, a conga line of people come up here strongly vehemently object.
Mr. Forino, could you get back to, you were talking about the mental health. So you gear into the left a little bit.
I'm talking about the responsibility and responsible spending of public money. Okay? You, as a council, consistently do not listen to us. Strongly consider that we already pay federal taxes to this and the fact that the only thing that you've listened to us so far was public support for a pig over the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forino. My one minute respond. The council has the right to invite any resident, any nonprofit, any business that is offering a service in our city that could help any resident, regardless if you are a veteran, if you are an individual, or a family. We offer that because we want our residents to know about all of the resources in our community. The council have not agreed to pay for any of these resources that have come before us and presented to the council. But if the council choose to see or the police department decide, or fire department, or even the city manager that some of these services we can use. And we are now in the budget season. That's why we would hope that everyone would come out on Thursday as we go into the bond and any other discussion about our budget and get involved. Thank you. Council member Sagara.
Mayor, I just want to offer my opinion on why we do not take citizens' comments till after because, you know, we as a council, when we hear something like what we're gonna do today, you know, we're gonna go into a vote. And so at the end of the presentation normally, you know, like what we're gonna do today, we're gonna vote on these decisions. So I don't think the citizens, you know, they wanna talk on something after we already voted. And so that's my personal opinion as to why we don't do that.
Thank you for your comment. And that is a discussion item. Melissa Brown. Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
I think out of clarity, what the prior citizen was asking for was not to speak after a vote, but prior to the vote on each item after the presentation so that citizens are more informed on what they're speaking about. Last week, I sat here, I watched a number of nonprofit organizations who came in and waited all evening to see if they were going to be approved or not, only to find out that the list was not going to be shown anywhere. And they walked out of these chambers still not knowing if they were on the recommended list or not. So I believe that's where it is, is in that transparency. People, those individuals, if there had been a presentation, could have come up to speak whether they wanted to support the decision of the council or not to recommend them for their grant. I think that's where it's coming from. Appreciate one moment of honesty tonight where we finally found out that I was correct last week that Pape Dawson is contracted by the city to do review of engineering. They could be the best engineers in the world, but I think we're still walking into a conflict of interest by having them doing reviews for the city and then also doing separate engineering plans. There were, my understanding, two different firms that were interviewed. And so what was the decision making on why it would be Pape Dawson over the other one that presumably we don't already have a PSA with? Also, in looking for some clarity, city council is looking, is supposed to approve emergency spending of $87,891.17 for work done at the Greater Colleen Chamber Commerce Building, which we learned last week the city owns. We don't know how much the chamber actually leases that building from us for. I do know that according to their most recent 990 form, the Chamber Commerce has approximately a quarter million dollars worth of physical assets, buildings, land, equipment, et cetera. So if they have other buildings, why are they leasing that building from the city? And how much are they paying? But not only that, the Colleen Daily Herald last week was told that $15,571.95 was already paid for the interior. We have a $10,000 deductible. The total amount being requested is almost $88,000. However, the exterior costs only add up to $80,211.51, with there being approximately $14,600 in overhead and profit, both at 10% for this organization. The other $7,679.66 are all for carpeting and ceiling tiles for rooms that were not the primary affected room. The primary affected room was the conference room, which is, if you're looking at the building on the west side of the building, of the 12 buildings listed, none of them say conference room for what this money would be applied to. So are we just going ahead and doing some much-needed upgrades for outdated carpets and ceiling tiles while the building is still under renovation and repairs from a fire? And if so, just be honest with the citizens and let us know that that's the case. How much of this money, of this $87,000, are we expecting to get back from TML for our insurance? How much have we actually paid? And what did our $10,000 deductible pay for? Did we already pay an extra $5,000? I think these are very pertinent questions for transparency, for the public to know.
Thank you. There are questions on the floor. If anyone feel, wanna answer those questions? Okay. Moving forward. Discussion item. Counsel, you have three minutes to speak three times each. Madam Secretary.
DS 23036, Discuss Wounded Hero Mental Health Program.
Mrs. Johnson. Good evening, ma'am. Thank you for coming out tonight and sharing with us another resource for the residents. Do you have the, do you need the clicker? You have it?
I do.
Whenever you're ready, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor Debanash King and the city council for this time. My name is Ayanna Johnson. I am a licensed professional counselor. I've been doing counseling for a little over 10 years. And I come to talk to you about a silent assassin, a silent killer that plagues, that steal and kill our children, your grandchildren, family members, and those we love. And that is called mental health. I've had the opportunity to be on the front line and working at a middle school to see what mental health does to our students, what it does to educational staff, and what it does to those who are first responders. And so therapy can save not just my life or your life, but it can save many lives. And so sometimes we just need to have a talk, right? A lot of times, we think that going to a counselor is something as, it's taboo, is something that we just don't do, that something has to be seriously wrong with us. But it's just talking to grandmother, it's talking to a friend because we all need to be able to talk to someone who is not judgmental. I come here to represent also myself, my business of wellness, it's counseling. We see councils, adults, adolescents, teenagers, military, law enforcement, community leaders, and anybody who just needs a helping hand. The counseling services that I provide are, my services also assist with individuals with becoming more capable of handling stressful occupations because we know that a lot of times that life itself, we found out with COVID as it yanked the blanket of mental health and all those who've been trying to hide to reveal how mental health has plagued the lives of so many people. That is not just us, but it's even worse, it's even more detrimental for those who have stressful occupations. Mental health, so what are we looking at? More than 60% of people struggle with anxiety disorders, and they don't receive treatment. When we look at suicide, suicide is on the rise globally. But if we were to just look at suicide and the people who think of what life would be like without them in it, that it would be better with them in it, without them in it, for Texas is 4%. For Bell County is 4.6% in Texas. For Bell County is 4%, but for Colleen is 3.6% of those individuals who just have the thought that life would be better without them in it. And so when we also look at individuals who are in high-position jobs, such as law enforcement, according to the National Alliance of Mental Illness, police face higher rates of depression, substance abuse, burnout, PTSD, anxiety, more than the general public. Their stress is normalized because they see it on a normal basis. And so for them to cope with it, they have normalized what they see. But you and I, we don't see what they see. They see things that are more detrimental that they take home with them. And so this is why their rates have been higher. Once they do realize that they do need mental health, they don't seek it for three reasons. For the concern about confidentiality within their department, that they are no longer fit to do their job that they have dedicated their life for. They don't believe that a psychologist can help them relate, can relate to their occupational duties. But it's not just their duties. Counselors talk about stress. What is stress? What does it look like? It gets to their level. How are they seeing it? How is it affecting their lives? And help them to better management. And then just the stigma. Many of those working in law enforcement believe that seeking mental health services means that they are just not fit to do what they've been called to do. So our heroes need rescuing. Everyone needs rescuing. In an article that was published on September 9th, 2022, First Responders and Mental Health When Heroes Need Rescuing, it is estimated that 30% of first responders develop behavioral health conditions, including but not limited to depression and PTSD, as compared to 20% of the general public. Now, this is high because of everything that they see. We saw firsthand with COVID of first responders and how mental health plagued not just their lives, but also their families. And when we look, and we move from law enforcement and firefighters, and we move into the education because we saw education also being affected, especially by COVID as well, the stress that was placed on teachers, but not just teachers, but also the children that were there. In an article written in 2022, teachers have double the stress of the average American worker. A new report reveals that teachers and principals report frequent job-related stress at twice a rate of the generalized population of adults. I can read this for you, but I can tell you firsthand that I've been to teachers' classrooms. I have seen them break down in the middle of their classrooms. I have pulled them out and I have talked to them about the stress that they have been going through with dealing with what their expectations are as well as dealing and trying to manage the mental health of the children who are in their class. I can pull out more statistics, but I can tell you firsthand about the children who came into my office, about things that have been going on with their family, that they were not able to focus in school because they were so worried about mom taking their life. They were worried about dad and how he was going to react because of PTSD. They were worried about getting things done at home because they weren't able to complete their homework because they're taking care of their siblings themselves. And the stress that they have and everything that they have on top of them, that they too need counseling. It can save a life. So what are the benefits? To improve communication and interpersonal skills, greater self-acceptance and self-esteem, the ability to change self-defeating behaviors and habits, better expression and management of your emotions, including anger, relief from depression, anxiety, and other mental health conditions, the ability to manage stress more effectively. We understand that jobs are stressful. And so now, how do we understand the stress of the job and how to manage that stress so that they can do their job in a more effective way? A greater sense of self and purpose. And these are some of the resources, if not all, of things that I will be able to help provide not just anyone within Texas, but also specifically Colleen. My children are in the school systems. My husband and I are here in Colleen. And we believe that it takes one person at a time meeting those needs in order for a community to be healthy and to be able to provide what they need for the people who are in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking out your time. We may have some questions for you. Thank you for taking out your time for coming tonight and sharing that much-needed resource within our community. And one of the things that we say always that we have the resources in the community. Our residents sometimes don't know where to find those resources. And for you taking out your time and your family, back there Reverend Johnson and your two boys to come and share that resource with us, we're very grateful. Are there any questions? Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Johnson, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is it doctor? Miss doctor, I don't want to.
Mrs.
Mrs.
Doctor's coming, it's coming.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll echo what the mayor said. I do appreciate you spending the time to let us know the importance of counseling and the effects of stress on different occupations that we may have throughout the city. I would like to understand a little bit better, and this may not be a question for you. I think we had a discussion when we went into insurance before about whether any type of counseling was available under the policy that we were switching to. If anyone could kind of. About the coverage of insurance, the type of insurance we have here in the city. Does that cover counseling? And you may, if you don't know right now, that's fine. I thought I remember hearing that in that discussion. And if you don't have the information right now, that's fine.
Yeah, I can speak very generally. We do, as part of our employee assistance program, there are certain counseling sessions that employees can seek out with that. And ultimately, HR gets information on how many employees utilize that, but not on specific of who actually utilized that. So, it is confidential.
Okay, well, if nothing else, I think it is a great resource, and I would love to have you join us at the Crime Solutions Committee, because this is exactly the type of resource that we are looking for to help people who have problems that, again, I don't like to make it about crime, but just the potential of de-stressing, or I don't know what the word, the professional word would be for that. But taking the stress out of someone's life to make, better have them make clearer decisions. And so, I think that this would be a great resource to have on tap for that. We do have a Crime Solutions Committee here on Friday at two, is it two or four? I tell you what, I got your information here. I'll get in touch with you and let you know more about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have a question, please raise your hand. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So, thank you again for that presentation. I do think it's important that our citizens know what resources are out there. You mentioned something that kind of struck me, which was dealing with the children, especially after COVID, and understanding how bad that trauma was for them. So, I saw that on your list, you mentioned that you do preteen services. There's also trauma that comes along with not having insurance in our communities and things like that. So, do you all do cash pay or offer other incentives for your services?
I do. I do a sliding scale as well for those who do not have health insurance. And I work with families to see what is capable within their own resources.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Cobb.
Evening.
Good evening. It's always a welcome sight to see you. You've given to the community in so many ways with our COVIDs and our different pods throughout this year. And we're looking forward to the services that you will offer our patients who have mental illness. Thank you for coming. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being here. Great presentation, and I know that that's a problem throughout our cities. You know, every time we hear the news, some tragedy happens, then we can always connect that to some kind of mental illness. And the challenge, because I know that we do have a lot of people here that connect with what you're saying. I know that that's a problem not just here, but throughout. But the challenge always seems to connect with those people, you know? And I think you mentioned it, you know, a lot of them, they don't want to get out there and they don't want to need the help until it's too late. And so, that's always going to be, especially with our kids. But my big question tonight is, because you did a great presentation, was there anything in particular that you were trying to get from us as a city council? I know you mentioned our police officers and all that, but I didn't hear any type of ask or anything. You're just trying to inform us of this? Or was there a particular want that you would like to see maybe now or in the future?
How can we work together to help ensure that those who are on the front line are mentally capable of continuing to do the job that they promised that they would do? And so, working, being able to work together to provide sources and resources. I know that because of the stigma of going to an actual building of individuals' just own anxiety of who's seeing me and what are they going to say? So, I also provide virtual counseling as well, where they can stay within the comfort of their own home, and no one has to know that they're seeking counseling to get rid of, get rid of that stigma. But even how we can combine together to work and do groups. I am available to do counseling groups with such first responders of officers, or firefighters, or teachers, or whomever it is that needs it to see so that they can see that they're not the only ones that are going through it by themselves.
Right. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
I think the first step was tonight, coming and presenting your program. What I like, the uniqueness about your program, especially with our youth and what's going on in the nation as a whole, that you have the experience, and you also have the license to be in front of us and talk to us about mental health. The second thing is that we're doing a resource on our page about all the resources that are available in the city of Colleen. We're working on that to ensure that our residents know where to go to find those resources. That's why it's also important that any nonprofit or any business that would like to come before us and tell us about the services that they can provide for our residents to enhance their quality of life. That's number two. And number three, we have our police chief and our fire chief in the back of the room, and that's something that you should schedule a meeting with them and sit down with them individual, because we per se don't know the services that they have and what needs are there. But I like the part where you stated about students. They have parents, and our police department and our firefighters, they have kids. And what they go through sometimes can be transferred to their students with that ten-year experience working in the school. So, you have the holistic view from high, to see it from every perspective. And that's unique in counseling services. So, I'm truly grateful that you came tonight and presented your presentation to the council. And it's being recorded, so hoping a family, hoping that if a family member or a police officer, first responder, it may not even be in the city of Colleen, it could be in another city, that they view this video, that know that your services are available in a time of crisis. And for that, we're very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, ma'am. Madam Secretary.
Got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. Are we inviting any other counseling organizations or companies to come speak to the council about the services that they offer?
Any resident or organization that can come to you or any council member, or come to the city staff and say they want to present, we have not turned down anyone. It's open to anyone that has a service within the city of Colleen.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome. Madam Secretary.
DS twenty-three, zero, three, seven. Fire Department update on the two thousand and twenty-one master plan.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Chief Kupinski.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of City Council. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about a master plan that was presented to you about a year and a half ago. The fire department, a little bit of background. We had completed, we hired a firm, Emergency Services Consulting International, and they completed our fire department master plan in two thousand and twenty-one. We presented that to City Council the same year, and of course, at your request, Ms. Mayor, to bring an update, to let you know where we've gotten, because there have been a number of recommendations that were put into that master plan. We use that as our guide for any of our budget requests throughout each budget process. Everything we do goes back to that master plan so that we can tie it to an objective. It's a comprehensive document, provided an extremely in-depth analysis of the Colleen Fire Department. And it's a roughly five-to-ten-year plan. It depends, some long-term goals may take up to ten years. But it gives us a platform to have steps to take place within that five-to-ten-year, within that ten-year period in total. And this is your update today, to share strategies that we've accomplished and then those that still remain. So, in our recommended short-term strategies, at the completion of the document, there were a number of short-term strategies that were recommended that we could tackle. Some of it was low-hanging fruit, so we'll go over those. Anything you see that does not have an indicator next to it in green or yellow, we have not tackled yet, but it is still in the plan. So, creating Colleen Fire Department Strategic Plan, which spans a three-to-five-year period, which is a follow-up to the master plan. Given the fact that we had a good groundwork for the first couple of years, looking into the master plan is something we're going to do closer to the end of this year, the beginning of next year. And that's going to include a series of meetings with internal stakeholders, firefighters, other city departments, and the external stakeholders, the citizens of the city of Colleen, to find out what they expect or what they want from their fire department. And then, we build that master plan around that. I've been part of that process a number of times. I'm very confident that something is, that can be done at little cost, with maybe bringing a single person from the outside in, but otherwise run by your fire department and members of your command staff. Deliver performance evaluation training to our officers, and we have completed that. We have started and we will continue. That is going to be ongoing. Having training for our company officers who previously had not had any training on how to be a supervisor. Up until this point, you were taking a test. You passed the test. Based on your score, you were promoted, and now you're a boss. Here you go. Here's your badge. You're in charge of an engine company, but there's been no officer development training. And I'm happy to say that our first two sessions taking place in two thousand and twenty-three are already being planned by our deputy chief of training. Create driver engineer positions. This is a tough one. While it seemed to be short-term in the strategy, burnout of our paramedics and the call volume of our twenty-two thousand EMS runs a year is tough. And by creating a driver position, that would lock out a rotation day off the ambulance to go to the engine. It's a specific position where you only drive the fire engine every day that you come in. Losing those ten positions a day to rotate out our medics off the ambulance is tough, so it's not one that we have tackled as of yet. Although many other departments do it, they're very different than what the Colleen Fire Department is in ways of our call volume. So, that, while it was a recommended short-term strategy in our command staff decision, it's more of a midterm-to-long-term strategy. Adding an engine to structure fire initial assignments. We were finding that we were short-staffed when we responded to the highest priority call, which is a structure fire, and that was very easy. We did that immediately. We now send four engines, a tower ladder, a heavy rescue, and then your battalion chiefs and EMS captains to every structure fire. Previously, it was three. Review and revise our EMS response modes. We continually do that. It's a tough one to say it's a short-term strategy. This was more geared towards those non-urgent calls or our patients with a high level of recidivism, where they call two, three, four times a day, and do we really need to respond lights and sirens to those calls? And then, do we transport to the hospital lights and sirens? I'm really proud of the fire department and the fact that, for a number of years, even a moderate-level patient who gets transported to the hospital, you might see an ambulance being, driving down WS Young to Seton with only one person in the front seat. That's a patient being transported to the hospital without lights and sirens. So, our guys and gals are really good at determining who needs to get to the hospital quicker versus who can do routine traffic. And that's safer for firefighters crossing intersections and accidents, and it's safer for citizens. Traffic is the biggest worry of ours. I hate to say today that just three hours ago, a West Texas firefighter died in the line of duty because he was hit by a semi truck on I-35. That's a very sad day for our fire service. And whatever we can do to minimize that, we're going to do that. And I'm very proud of our men and women. Require the use of a station point capture vehicle exhaust systems and install these systems in all stations and support facilities that maintain apparatus. This is an exhaust removal system that, when you start the engine inside of the station or the ambulance, it sucks the exhaust out of the diesel up past the roofline and out into the air. And we have a number of stations that do have those systems and that need repair, and then other stations that do not. Our oldest station, we don't want to invest in that when we know that within a year or two, we're going to be putting a new station, hopefully. It is in the capital improvement plan, so we have to gauge that a little bit. The problem we see is that there are three different systems installed in the stations. We have no consistency. So, we're working on getting some quotes and putting it into the capital plan to replace all the systems at one time in all the stations so that we have a standard system throughout the city. Improve station workplace safety. That's ongoing. That's never going to be completed. When we talk about that, ensuring that our bunker gear is not in living quarters now, even though we have a great program with cleaning out that gear after a fire so that there are no carcinogens in that bunker gear for the next call. We put standards in place of not wearing your bunker boots inside of the station where you live for twenty-four hours. So, that's always ongoing, and I'm happy to say that our deputy chief of training, that is one of the primary focuses. Securing personnel records, we have completed that. They found that all of our personnel records were in paper in a drawer that was not locked. Those have already been moved, digitized, put into city IT systems, both internal in the fire department and into a secondary file in HR. They are all secured, password-protected, and digitized. So, we have no more paper files anywhere within our buildings. Establishing a maximum consecutive hours work policy. We are finding that firefighters, when overtime is needed, there were some very assertive individuals, which we love those go-getters, but it became very apparent on February nineteenth and around the deep freeze of two thousand and twenty-one, when firefighters were working a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty-four hours straight. Contrary to popular belief, our firefighters don't sleep well in a fire station. Yes, you have the opportunity after seven PM to rest, but there are many studies out there that say that you do not get good, sound sleep, and that was a safety issue. We changed the policy, immediately implemented it. It has since been approved by the Civil Service Commissioners, and that is now a standing policy in the fire department that you cannot work more than forty-eight hours straight without a twelve-hour break in between. Continue with our plans to add Medic-22. Thank you to city manager and city council. We accomplished that, and Medic-22 is up, in service, and running, and has been for almost a year now, a little over a year now. And it is a busy ambulance, so it is a job well done. Establish local response performance criteria in accordance with NFPA seventeen-ten. This is a lot of words here. I don't want to bore you with what that is. NFPA seventeen-ten is a pretty big document, but it's really about deploying our fire suppression operations, and that falls in with accreditation. So, while they said it was a short-term strategy here, accreditation is about a three-to-four-year process for a department who's not been accredited. That's going to be one of our more midterm strategies. So, it has not been accomplished yet. As we get into our midterm strategy, seek ground emergency medical transport subsidy funding. That has been changed to TASPP. That is in progress. There is an RFQ out right now for companies that are qualified in recapturing these funds. And these are funds that we receive for the gap in our ambulance billing for those who are in Medicaid. So, if we charge a thousand dollars for an ambulance call and Medicaid only reimburses the city for two hundred and fifty dollars, and we know it costs more than two hundred and fifty dollars to run that call, this is a state program that allows you to recapture the remainder of that. And that is in process now. There's going to be some language change. We're going to be coming back to you with an ordinance change as well, because we have to change some language in it. But that's going to allow us to recapture conservatively anywhere from three to four hundred thousand dollars of uncaught ambulance billing each year. Create and implement a commercial occupancy life safety inspection program and pre-incident planning program, and add personnel to the fire prevention division. This was something we tried to accomplish a couple of years ago in decision packages. It was tied in with the rental inspection program that was going to include two fire inspectors that did not make it through the city council approval process. That doesn't mean we stopped there. We've taken and reassigned two of our operations personnel for a six-month period. They got their inspector certification, and they've actually been doing inspections. So, we can come back with hard data on, aside from rental inspection program, where our highest hazard for fire loss and life safety are, there's all the other businesses that need to be inspected. So, they have been doing a great job. They're in their third month of completion at the end of this month. We're going to have hard data to say what these two inspectors can actually do and how much they can accomplish in ways of getting inspections done, even for our businesses, which should be inspected at least once a year. Bolster the department's public education program. Proud to say we've done a great job with that without having a dedicated, full-time person to be able to do that. Most departments have a fire prevention and education safety position that is dedicated. We don't have that, but our men and women have stepped up, and we've done things like a junior fire camp, the Public Safety Open House, and getting into schools and being more deliberate about our education of fire prevention to our young kids. Rather than just showing up with the engine and showing the kids the cool engine, there's actually an educational program that now goes along with that. Ten to fifteen minutes, nothing major. But if we can even have one child change their course of a fire that happens in the house because they saw a cord that was on the ground that was all frayed, that's one save that we're never going to know, and that's okay. We can't measure that, but we have done a great job in getting that done. Incorporate assessment center components and promotional testing. This is in process. This is something we're going to need to work with the Firefighters Association on, much like the police department did with their association, and get meet and confer. Once meet and confer is voted on and moved forward, then we can go into a change to the promotional process that is not just taking a hundred-question written test, and the one with the highest score has the highest chance of getting promoted. So, that is in process. We're working alongside the Firefighters Association, and once they're ready to move into meet and confer, I am ready to support it wholeheartedly to discuss our promotional process. Require emergency medical, emergency vehicle technician certifications for city mechanics who maintain fire apparatus and ambulances. This is a little bit of a hybrid. It is not realistic to think that, once we spend all of the dollars training someone to become an emergency vehicle technician, EVT, in our city garage, that they're going to stay, because it's just not possible. The once, and it's not just here. If you talk to anywhere, once they get those certifications, they become highly marketable to the private companies who want those certifications, and they make double and sometimes triple their hourly rate than what the city can offer. they make double and sometimes triple their hourly rate than what the city can offer. And that's not unique or a surprise. But we have a great partnership with our, Sidens Martin is the dealer who sold us our recent lot of fire trucks, and they are certified EVTs. And so you just recently approved a contract where we outsource all of our maintenance to the fire trucks. This is a win-win because only EVTs who work only on fire trucks will be working on our highly specialized pieces of equipment. It frees up hours for our current city garage mechanics to focus on the garbage trucks, the VAC trucks, the dump trucks, those other diesel engines that also need much attention as well, and they're not as complex where a pump ties into the motor and anything you do, one can affect the other. And I'm really excited to say that we're going to have Sidens Martin moving into town here within about 90 days. They found a property, they're going to be moving their maintenance facility here. That is a big win for not only Colleen, but the Bell County Fire Service, because right now, when we take those trucks, if they can't do the service on site, we drive them to either Cedar Park or Maynor. It's going to be right in our backyard. So this is a win-win, and that's why we marked it in progress. Upgrade the training captain position to a chief officer rank. We did that, and deputy chief Doug Foster is our newly appointed and promoted training chief in the deputy chief position. He's been in there about a year now. He's now getting his feet underway and is doing a great job with much better focus on training for the line personnel, because the previous captain position was focusing more on the academy and are not even hired or newly hired personnel. Establish specific policies and procedures for the various technical rescue disciplines. We have done that, and not only have we done that, the policies and procedures are being built now even for our driver operators who are allowed to drive the fire engines. You just don't get, get your license, get hired in Colleen, and you get to drive a $900,000 fire engine. You actually have to pass a criteria before you're allowed to drive that, that vehicle and be assigned into the driver spot. Survey the security risk at the fire stations and increase station facility security. We worked with Willie Resto, and we've identified a number of issues. Unfortunately, I won't say issues, but doors that perhaps instead of a key lock or a punch pad that fades out, we can tie it into the city's IT system and have key fobs and things like that. We don't have that at any of our fire stations. But again, it's been in discussions. Willie is aware of it, and we continue to work on getting that funding secured, put it together, and secure those stations a little better. Leverage our social media platforms and improve the KFD web pages. While our city's page, we've not had time to be able to dedicate to actually changing the layout of the pages itself. Working with Ms. Ford has been outstanding, and we have put the Colleen Fire Department out on our social media sites way more in the last two years than ever seen in the 10 years before. And that is all the credit going to not only the men and women of the Colleen Fire Department who are very vigorous about getting that information as quickly as possible, but then communications getting out quickly, and you see a Fire Department post at least once or twice a week, pretty regularly. Evaluate employee turnover. It is constant. Here's what I can tell you about that. It's not unique to the city of Colleen. When, we just finished the chief's conference last week, you talk to any Fire Department, turnover in the fire service is rampant, and finding fully certified paramedics to hire is the biggest challenge. But what we do is we look at the turnover every quarter. I meet individually with anybody who separates from the Fire Department. They get a 30-minute meeting directly with me, and I ask them why. What could we have done better? Is there anything we can do better? And then we change, and we make changes for that. A year ago, a number of members were leaving for other departments. Some factors we can't change. Call volume, in that we have ambulances and other Fire Departments don't. So they were going to other departments to not be on an ambulance, make the same amount of money, and just be on a fire truck. We can't compete with that. But what they were saying is that the pay was an issue, and you guys, city manager and all city council have approved great decision packages over the last two years that our lowest paid firefighter entry level has received a 15% increase. Our most senior received 11. We are now competitive with our comparables. So now the most recent meetings have not been leaving to go to other departments for higher pay. It has been some personal reasons. Military, of course, is going to take a few of our employees. And the challenge of paramedic school, when we hire people who are not paramedics, it is a rigorous program, and we've lost five recently who were not able to meet the minimum educational requirement to pass paramedic school. So now we're changing our focus to the paramedic certifications, and that will be continually, we're never going to stop evaluating that. Create a targeted anti-arson prevention program. That would fall under one of the items that would be those full-time hired fire inspectors. They would also get a juvenile fire setter intervention program certification, which when we identify kids who like fire and like to play with fire, it's a non-punitive program that's out there. It's been vetted through NFPA. That would be one of those tasks that could be taken on by the full-time fire inspectors in the decision packages we submit. Long-term strategies. Build and staff a new fire station in the south central Colleen area. Well, again, we know where we are on that. We've got our architectural firm underway. We've got the property already purchased, and that purchase is almost completed, and everything's going to fall together that we should expect to see a groundbreaking by the end of the year or mid, early next year. Increase our outdoor siren coverage in the south areas of the city. Those are, again, decision packages that are submitted, have been submitted over the previous years on where we need those warning sirens. And again, those are the outdoor warning sirens. We have all the things to notify our citizens. Our code red program is imperative. That notifies those citizens of emergencies or disasters that might be coming in, tornadoes, floods, when you're not outside. So the outdoor warning sirens need to be addressed, but we do have ways to notify our citizens. Explore the feasibility of implementing a community paramedic program. That's always in process, but right now, we have to get our staffing up to where we can respond to the emergency calls we have, and then we can start looking at what is the cost of getting a unit that perhaps doesn't respond to emergency, and they sit on the scene and work with the patient for half hour, 45 minutes, and get them to a doctor's appointment or urgent care as opposed to the ER. We have a high number of our citizens who do utilize the ER as their primary care physician, and we can divert those calls. But that takes a program and a definite amount of funding that we haven't been able to quite put a number on yet, but we are evaluating it, and the EMS chief, deputy chief of EMS chambers, being an RN certified already, has a lot of inside knowledge and information that he's starting to build a model of what that will look like that we can hopefully present sometime within the next year. Explore ways to increase diversity in the KFD. Well, I would say, be remiss if I say that that's done. It's never done. It's constant. What I can tell you is that over 50% of our students in our current academy class are diverse. We have females, males, we have people from all walks and races. That is something that other departments have come to us and said, how do you do that? I wish we could get our academies to look the way your academy does. So we give them all the tools, they get the training. The next step is they've just got to pass the test and come on with Colleen Fire Department if they're not already hired. And so we are always going to try to tackle that and make sure that we have a diverse workforce. I'm very happy to say that while it doesn't specifically look the way the city looks, right? We do have 14 females, and we do have, again, men and women from all walks and races of life that are on our Fire Department, and something I'm very proud of. So in summary, we were given 27 total strategies. We've completed or are in our constant evaluation of 10. We have nine in progress, and we have eight remaining to be addressed. I think that's a pretty, pretty big accomplishment considering 27 strategies, and we've been able to tackle and address 19 of those in the first year and a half that we've had this master plan. And so with that, I'm open to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. The night I had done the State of the City address, and one of the things I discussed was personnel. And as we know, we're looking at a new facility, training, and also opening up another fire station, and diversity is really big for me. I believe our police department, our city staff, Fire Department, whatever has the city of Colleen imprint on, it should reflect the residents that we, that we serve. And taking into consideration, everybody may not want to be a firefighter, but one of the things is recruitment and how we go about recruiting. How do we go into the schools and the programs, and how do we sell the police department, the Fire Department? And if we are in a shortage of personnel, how are we recruiting more personnel for the Fire Department?
So recruiting personnel is not an issue. Our current list, we test every six months. Our current list still has a number of people on it, they just aren't certified. So being able to hire, we have to weigh it out. It takes us almost seven months from the time somebody gets hired with no certifications to get them on the floor and actually onto a rig to be able to respond to calls. And then they have to go to paramedic school, and they take that on for the next year of their career while they're on shift. We cover their time on shift, and they go off duty on their own time and complete paramedic. That's a requirement that you're enrolled in paramedic school within two years of hire. So it's really not recruiting. We have a test that's coming up. I just checked before the meeting here. We have 107 applicants who are cleared to take the test. Of the 107, we're probably going to have 80 show up to take the written. They don't all show up, and there's other job offers out there with other departments. So we've never run out of people on a list. The highest thing is looking at certified people. And how can we attract more already certified paramedics here so that we don't lose those, those employees who don't quite understand what it is to take on paramedic? It's a little bit different than 1980 with Johnny Gage and Roy DeSoto and Squad 51 from Rescue 51, but it's a lot different now. Their book was about this thick. Our paramedics now have two books that are over 1,000 pages each, on top of over 1,000 hours of clinical time they have to do just to graduate the program. So it's really about working with that, and we do set them up for success. They have opportunities for all kinds of tutoring. Some of it, to be honest, is lack of, of go-get-'em or being able to follow directions. If you have trouble getting registered for class on time when you're given an order to get registered for a class, that's not anything we can change. But we are, I'm very proud to say that most of our men and women are successful, and we offer them as many resources as possible. We also have our high school program that you can come out of high school as certified firefighter, EMT, and come right on to the department if you pass the test and go right to the floor, which has been a benefit. A number of our captains came through that program. So this is a longstanding program that we have brought homegrown members out of that high school program with KSD up into full-time status.
Thank you for that update. And my last question before I turn it over to Mayor Protem. You had 27 objectives, you completed 10. As we go into the budget season, what are your top priorities?
To keep the pay competitive. Our paramedics assigned to the ambulance are, are the ones who do the, the major load of the work, not that our firefighters don't. But those ambulances, I can tell you that they don't sit down at the dinner table and have a hot meal quite often. It's probably the exception more than the rule. And so increasing the assignment pay, which was our top-rated decision package last year, that's going to remain our top-rated decision package, so that those who are assigned to the ambulance for the day get a higher stipend. Granted, our paramedics on the engine are doing paramedic work, and they treat the patient before the ambulance gets there with all the ALS equipment that all the ambulances do, but you're going to see that as, as one of our highest rated packages again. I'm confident in that as we've reviewed with my command staff just this week, our list of decision packages that we're going to submit.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, how you doing today?
Very good, yourself?
All right. Got a few questions for you. When you first came on, you talked to me about a fire rescue metric that was used at the national level to determine the response times. Where do we stand right now as, as opposed to where we were when you first came on?
So six-minute response time and 90% is your national goal. If you've hit that, you are top-rated, five-star, five-tier. We make six minutes about 72% of the time, which is still good. That's not a bad thing at all. We got to strive to continue to increase that more. The biggest hit on that is where Station 4 is going to be built. We have an average seven and a half to eight-minute response time for the first arriving unit to that area, so that's going to help us tremendously, so much so that when it comes to our ISO rating, that's going to put us well over the 90% mark just by getting that station open and staffed with a suppression company and an ambulance.
And we have been moving in the right direction with that 72%. That's better than what it was.
Correct, yes. We were, we were around 68, 69% when we first got here.
So we're making gradual.
Creeping up.
Okay. Another question that I have is as far as, like the mayor said, I'm for the diversity, but I'm not for quotas. I just want you to make sure that we're exploring every avenue possible to have people of all different backgrounds and cultures be, have this as an option, have firefighting as an option. As I told you before, that, you know, that was my number one choice to be, just missed, we'll talk about that later. But, you know, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not just plugging quotas in. I don't, I don't expect the police or the Fire Department to look exactly like the city, but I expect everybody to be qualified more than anything. But secondly, that we are reaching out to underserved, underexposed cultures in different ways. So I think that Ms. Ford has done an excellent job right now of really putting us on the spotlight for that. So just keep up the good work with that.
I could just comment on that real briefly. I 100% agree. Quotas are not, not the primary. We have to have, the citizens of Colleen expect the highest qualified, most professional people to respond and fix their emergency as quickly as possible. And so we definitely do that 100%. Again, I'm proud with what we're able to do. We have now, number of our areas have kids, right? If you can see it, you can be it. So our junior fire academy that we do, it's a one-day thing, and it's very, very low-cost and affordable. That has gotten citizens of the city of Colleen from all of our areas who come in, and I can promise you that that was a very diverse group last year. I'm confident it will be this year. So that's where we start. We've got to get them when they're little. Everyone who's little wants to be a fireman.
No, that's, that's great stuff. I appreciate it and keep up the good work on that. And going on from that, from talking about kids, I know we start our summer employment, youth employment. Is there any type of way that we can intertwine the, the activities of the Fire Department into maybe one or two of those jobs that, Mr. Adams, I see him shaking his head, he's the one that came up with the idea. I don't know if that's what he had intended, but I don't know if you have anything in, in mind of that sort.
Unfortunately, once you start having anybody do Fire Department work, it falls under 143. And under 143, it's very strict guidelines. It's the Texas State Code, the Civil Service Code, that if you're doing any kind of firefighting activity, you have to fall under that, and that is a whole different ballgame, certifications and things. But working with Office of Emergency Management with Peter and the One Star Foundation, that is an opportunity for people to come in and be part of emergency services, and even if they don't want to do emergency management, they work very closely, obviously, as you know, with the Fire Department, that they get to see that and have an opportunity to ask questions, maybe dive into a project that might be part of it, if it falls into the scope of that grant.
Sure, that's, that's exactly what I meant as far as, of course, I wouldn't have them actually doing anything that you all take that, you know, very seriously in, in what you do, but, you know, the exposure is important, so the proximity to that exposure can be eye-opening as well. You don't have to actually be there to actually see what that person over there is doing to say, oh, that looks interesting. So again, thank you for that information. When I also, a couple of years back, storage equipment right down here in that building, has that, that situation been taken care of?
Yeah, the Avenue D station, our support services station, it was evaluated immediately after this master plan to ensure that it was structurally sound. We work with Ms. Hinkle's staff. They got a engineer out there to determine that it is structurally safe, even though it's an older building and a little tired, so we don't have to move out of that building. But as soon as the EOC is built, that is going to have space to move the support services division all into that emergency operations complex.
Okay, great. Two more questions. EVT certification, that's a great, great information to pass along to us, especially because our fleet services, from what I understand, those, those vehicles can't even fit sometimes around that fleet services over there on WS Young. Is that correct?
A number of our suppression units cannot fit inside of the, the city garage, so they do the work outside. And if they're in the middle of a, tearing an engine apart where they can't lift the cab, it stays outside, and they have to cover it with a tarp just to keep it from the elements until they can get back to it the next day.
So this is a great thing for that. Okay. And last question is the most important, overall morale. What, can you give us a good feed on what the sense of the morale of, of, of the firefighters and the EMTs that you have on staff? I mean, it's, yeah, pay is important and all of that, but we more concerned about, you know, are they happy here? Are they getting what they need to be good firefighters? Thank you.
So I think of the other 238 members of the department, you probably get 238 opinions on that morale. So, individually, there's going to be members who might not get something they want, and so their morale is upset because we didn't make a decision that specifically benefited a small group because we have to make the overall overarching decisions. I feel that the morale has improved over the last two years in ways that they get communication from their command staff. Command staff is urged and encouraged to make sure they get out to the stations and meet not just when you come down to the central station, because if you're getting called down there, usually they think it's because they're in trouble, right? So, we make sure that all six of the command staff get out and sit at the coffee table, at the dinner table, and actually have discussions so we can keep a finger on the pulse. And that's what allows us to understand what the highest priorities are and highest concerns. One of the biggest ones now is firefighter cancer prevention, firefighter mental health awareness, which we already heard a discussion on. Our peer support team is doing a great job. You're going to see in RF, they've put an RFQ together. You're going to see a proposal where we're going to have an on-retainer, mental health specialist who is required to ride 24 hours, a minimum number of shifts. They put that all together, and that was the men and women of the Colleen Fire Department peer support team. Had nothing to do with the staff. So, I feel it's improved. Do we always have work to do? Absolutely. But I feel the morale has improved in the last couple of years.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for that presentation. Good information. You mentioned that you get like, what was it, 100 and some applications, right? And out of those, 85 show up? And how many pass?
Our last test, the pass rate was about 48%.
48%?
48%.
Almost less than half of those.
Correct.
And then out of those, they begin, they go to the training? And then how many pass the training?
The initial training for firefighter, EMT, I'm very happy to say we've only lost one new hire who couldn't pass the firefighter, the EMT curriculum in the last two years. Then when we get into the paramedic part, that's the one that's a little tougher.
That's the one that drops it. So, at the end, the final, how many are there graduating and becoming firemen?
Without having an exact number, I'm confident to say more than 75% of our
That's good.
hires who have no certifications come through the program, get through paramedic and graduate. We just had four graduate the last paramedic program.
How many?
Four, five, sorry, five. One who had gotten into a car accident during his clinicals and showed up in crutches, that's the dedication of our men and women. He wasn't going to miss that because that's how hard they worked to pass that paramedic program.
No. Well, I was trying to figure out of those 100, when it comes down to the end, how many is, that's all that's left is five?
That's, I'd have to look, that's an interesting percentage that I'm going to have to really dive into to look at our last list.
Pretty much, because I know, I've asked the chief this before. When I was mayor, you know, I went to graduation, and there was like 11 people graduating, and it's kind of similar. You know, I was asking how many took the civil service, and it was hundreds of them, over hundreds of them. And then at the end, when they're graduating, it was, came down to 11. And I know that it has nothing to do with us. I mean, there's a lot of stringent that's our place, you know, besides the test, the physical training. I don't know how much physical training, you know, applies to that. Drug test, I don't know if that has anything, factors in there. So, there's a lot of things that play into it. But I was thinking about that, and I see, you know, the Navy SEAL, they do about a 30% success rate, and I think we're probably in that.
I wouldn't disagree. Out of 100, I think, last test, to say we hired about 15 out of those 100, and again, myriad of reasons. The drug test, the interview board, there's all these steps along the way that at any point you can be removed from the process because we want to make sure we do get the Navy SEALs of the fire service. So, we get the best of the best because citizens entrust.
So, as they're going through those different challenges throughout, I'm sure, are they mentored, not just, you know, the skill set, but, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of mindset that goes along with that?
We, again, very happy. One of our shifts started it and has taken off to the other two shifts where they do assign, when you get on to shift, you're assigned a mentor for that exact reason. You might not know, especially if you're new in the fire service, you might not know what the proper etiquette is that you might, you know, you shouldn't be the first one to sit down at the dinner table, but you should be the first one up to make sure the washrooms are clean and the floors are mopped. And not only that etiquette, but not to be afraid to ask a question because sometimes new people are very afraid, and now they have that trusted individually and go to like, "Hey, when the captain was saying this and this and this, what did it mean?" And they have that mentor now, and all three shifts have taken on that program.
Yeah, that's good. And I know the Mayor Protem asked about the morale, but I think at one time, you guys would give us the reports on your call rate, call volume. And I know that we always had a high one here, high rate of, you know, calls that being out. Has that improved any? Have we added more personnel that brings those numbers down? Because a lot of times, that's what creates the burnout. You know, you're going, you know, call after call after call, and when we got those reports, it was one of the highest compared to cities within our size. So, I don't know if that's still the case or not.
The addition of Medic 22 last year brought our unit hour utilization, that number's 30, and three of the ambulances were over that mark of when you need to add a resource. The addition of Medic 22 has brought all three of those units down to below that 30% threshold. So, it has absolutely helped. When we opened Station 4, that's going to add as well because the call volume shouldn't increase too terribly much with the addition of that resource. Yes, they'll service the citizens in the district of Station 4, but that ambulance will go citywide as any of the other nine do right now.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for what you do. And I'll thank all the firemen.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Again, thank you for your service. Very good information. Okay. Very good information. Thank you for that. While you can't really speak to morale, it sounds like you are there, everyone is motivated, and they are doing a great job. I can tell you from unfortunate trauma and experience, the customer service has drastically improved. I think I told you this privately, but publicly, but I want to go on the record and say 100%. My family has experienced unfortunate circumstances over the last couple of years, but the most recent experience that we had, your team was the epitome of professional, compassionate, careful, very diligent. And when people are experiencing trauma and heightened situation, it's very scary, and every single one of them were consistent across the board with how they treated those individuals that were involved in that particular scene. So, I think it's very important, and I'm sure you shared that information with them, but that people know that, I don't know about the morale, but the customer service is through the roof. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, in reference to the master plan, you said that you would have citizens involvement. Did you state when we, you would start that process?
So, that would be the strategic plan. So, that's, any department, fire department, they use that as their three-to-five-year map. That strategic plan, hopefully by around the end of the year, you know, November, December, we have the team assembled to be able to present those couple of meetings with internal and external stakeholders, and then put that plan together. And it's going to look very similar to the master plan. There's going to be a set of short-term, long-term, and midterm goals that we will derive as a result of those planning meetings.
And that's the citizen involvement, you will have that part?
Yep. That will include citizen involvement.
Okay. And my next question was the door security for the station. Some of your fire stations are like a safe haven. How's that going to work if there's a cold, if a child had an emergency? I know the one on Alms have like a safe haven. How would they get like knock, is it a button you push? How would that work?
Every station is equipped with an outdoor phone that you pick up, and it dials our 911 dispatch center immediately so that if the crew is out running a call, somebody else, the dispatch center answers it, and then they'll dispatch the next closest unit over there to give them a place of safe haven.
Okay. And my last question for you, the fire inspectors that you said, where did you pull the two individuals from? Were they off a fire truck, or are they captains, lieutenants?
They were fire rescue officers, so the first rank of when you get hired. These were people who had some circumstances that, there was some accommodation that was made, and with that, they needed to do some 40-hour work week, otherwise they weren't going to be able to continue working here due to some tragic circumstances that happened, or a military deployment of a single spouse who is gone for a year and a half, and he is the only provider for his child. He has no family nearby. Those people have since returned to shift because they were able to get their affairs in order and get more help from their family. But in the meantime, they were able to help us in ways of diving in. So, it was a win-win situation where those two members could have that accommodation and help us develop this plan and how many inspections that these people can do in a one-year period based off of a four, or a three- or six-month work standard, and it's been of great help.
So, you still, you still are in need of two fire inspectors?
Absolutely. That was a temporary accommodation, and they are back on the operations side, running emergency calls in one of the stations.
I have one more I had to check by. Your educational program, I know you're in the high school level, the program that we have in place, but from the elementary to middle school, how often do you go into the schools?
It's sporadic right now at the request of the school. If we had the fire prevention and life safety educator position, that would be their sole purpose is to partner with the high school, I'm sorry, with the grade schools and develop a learn-not-to-burn-type program where they're in the schools every month in each school.
So, that would be another position, which is personnel?
Absolutely. We just don't have the personnel available now. Are all assigned to either Operations Support Academy. We just don't have any additional staff that we could assign to that right now.
All right. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Madam, oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you. Madam Secretary, as we get ready to go into the consent agenda, council, you have three minutes to speak three times, and there will be an item that will be pulled off by Mayor Protem because we need to continue our transparency, and we did not discuss it, even though we had a conversation about talking about it last week. The nonprofits that received, was awarded the grant, but everyone had left, and we had moved on to the next item. So, Mayor Protem will be moving an item. But Madam Secretary, consent agenda.
MN 23006, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of February 20.
Madam Secretary, I apologize. I would like, before we get into detail, because there will be some discussion on those items, we're going to move back to the Colleen Star Award. Mr. Robinson is here. So, Madam Secretary, we're going back to the Colleen Star Award.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's fine. Colleen Star Award.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming out tonight. As you know, the city council always give out the Star Award to individuals that have contribute to our community by volunteer. This is just not an average person. It's someone that has gone beyond to make a powerful impact, not only in the community, but also in the child's life. This month, Mayor Protem had the honor to select someone, and that individual is Mr. Carl Robinson. And I will have Mayor Protem, you can come up and tell us more about Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to stick to the script because I happen to know this gentleman quite well beyond what I just see he does in the community, and I could be here all night if I just sat here and talked about all the things that he just did on his own. When I came up with this idea for the Star Award, this is exactly the type of person that I had in mind. And all the Star Award awardees that we've had in the past, they demonstrate that type of loyalty, commitment, dedication to our city that I had in mind. So, with that, without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, it is with great honor that I stem here today to present the award for outstanding service to youth in Colleen and Central Texas to Carl Robinson, Sr. Carl's dedication to mentoring young men and women, promoting health and fitness, and providing Christian ministry to the citizens of Colleen at Marble Heights Church is truly remarkable. His work has touched the lives of countless individuals, and his impact on the community is immeasurable. Carl's commitment to empowering, to empowering, empowering the youth of Colleen and Central Texas is truly inspiring. He has served as a mentor to countless young men and women, providing guidance and support as they navigate the challenges of life. His dedication to promotion, to promoting health and fitness has helped to improve the overall well-being of these, of those who he has worked with, and his Christian ministry has been a source of comfort and hope to many. Carl, we honor you today for your unwavering commitment to serving others. Your selfless dedication, tireless work ethic, and compassionate spirit are a true inspiration to us all. You have made a profound impact on the lives of those around you, and your legacy will continue to shape the future of our community for years to come. Thank you, Carl, for your service and dedication to the youth of Colleen and Central Texas. You are a true hero, and we are honored to recognize you today for your outstanding contributions to our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Protem. Put your paper behind you.
Put this one. Put this one.
Yeah. Mayor Protem, move this so we can get our picture.
First of all, giving honor to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who is the reason why I do what I do. We want to say thank you to Mayor, thank you to the council members, thank you to the city of Colleen. I am a product of, it takes a village to raise a child. Came from a single-parent home in Pace, Mississippi, where other men and people of the community were involved in my life. I am the first college graduate on both sides of my family, 26 years in military service, now newly retired. I can tell you, it was because of my village. I can remember one instance where I did something I didn't have any business doing as a young man, and about, by the time, I got a whooping there, and then by the time I got home, I got another whooping. So, again, that's the type of discipline and love that the community gave me. And when I got to Mississippi Valley State for college, again, God just opened the doors to put people in place to help me as a young man navigate through being in college and going to grad school and then being in the military. Needless to say, my call to the ministry was always on God's assignment. It was not on my assignment, but it was on His assignment. And when I kneeled to, to honor that call, I realized that there are several youth in our community that need our help. As I stand before you, I ask you guys to take the call, take the call to spend time outside of your households, helping some young man or young lady to be the best that they can be. Sometimes it takes application for admission for school. Sometimes it takes money out your pocket. Sometimes it's just taking, hearing, listening to what they're talking about. But I tell you, if we don't help them now, there are going to be some repercussions for that later on in our lives. They are our future. They are our present now, and they need our guidance. And that guidance comes from you taking your time out to put that time in with those young men and young women, and you can make a huge difference. Over 30 young men and women that I've helped to actually go to college, and out of that 30, about 27 have graduated. I have had some young men and young women who did not do some of the things I asked them to do, but at the same time, I'll take that three out of 30. I'll take that. I'll take 27 graduates out of 30 any day of the week. And I'm not saying it was all on me, but it was some of those guys that, had I not been there, they probably would not be where they were or where they are today. So, I stand before you as the CEO, as the servant leader of I Train U, where God gave me the vision to develop a multi-sport complex where our young men and young women can not only come for athletic development, but they can come for spiritual development, for academic support, for, we even have a work program. What we're trying to teach them is that athletics is not your only way out, all right? Athletics is not, your academic gifts and your talent is more than just sports. So, we want to make sure that at I Train University that we are developing our young men and women and that they have a out resource, that they have somewhere they can go. I think Colleen, at this, at the size of the city that we have right now, it's on us to develop somewhere for them to have an environment to go to, for them to have a place to go to, for them to be developed in an environment where they can go, not only just athletically, academically, but spiritually also. Because I truly believe without God, we can't do anything. And you see the state that our country is in right now, it's only going to get worse unless we change. And we have the power, the knowledge, and the understanding to be able to support our young men and young women, to make an immediate impact and change them today. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Madam Secretary, consent agenda.
MN 23006, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of February 28, 2023. RS 23056, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing municipal court software annual maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc., in the amount of $70,518.84. RS 23057, consider a memorandum resolution ratifying the letter of agreement with TRSI LLC doing business as Target Solutions for repairs to One Santa Fe Plaza, Colleen, Texas due to a structure fire that occurred on December 6, 2022, in the amount of $87,891.17. RS 23058, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a professional service agreement and addendum for the engineering design of the Stagecoach roadway replacement project with Pape Dawson Engineers, in the amount of $1,982,000. RS 23059, consider a memorandum resolution appointing members to the downtown advisory committee. RS 23060, consider a memorandum resolution accepting the annual audit report for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2022. RS 23061, consider a memorandum resolution adopting the naming, renaming of city facilities and name changes, renaming of city streets policy and guidelines. RS 23062, consider a memorandum resolution appointing presiding and alternate judges for the May 6, 2023 general election. RS 23063, consider a memorandum resolution to declare the public purpose and approve the grant funding allocations for seven nonprofit youth organizations with funding from the Public Facility Corporation. OR 23007, consider an ordinance amending an ordinance ordering a general election to be held on May 6, 2023, to elect a district council member for each of the city of Colleen's four districts. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 23-017, ordering the holding of an election in the city of Colleen, Texas, for the purpose of electing a council member for each of the four districts, providing for the filing of written application to have their names printed on the official ballot, specifying that the provisions of the general election laws shall control all questions pertaining to such election, prescribing the contents of the official ballot, providing for compensation, designating the polling places, and providing for posting and publication of notice of election and containing miscellaneous provisions." OR 23-006, consider an ordinance declaring an unopposed candidate canceling the May 6, 2023 general election in District 4. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance declaring unopposed candidates in the May 6, 2023 general city election, canceling the election in the district with unopposed candidates, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With the exception of RS 23063, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second with the exception of RS-23-063. All in favor, show a hand. One, two, three, four, five. The other two council members are not on, so it's five to zero. Mrs. Singh, RS-23-063, could you please call out the seven nonprofit organizations that was awarded funding?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll actually, I won't go through all these slides. We went through them last time, but I should have a list of the selected applicants. So it is Better Opportunities Shoemaker Students, The Boss Mentor Program, She Is Priceless, Alberta L. Barrett Arc to Freedom, Colleen Christian Broadcasting Corporation, the Clements Boys and Girls Club affiliate of Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Texas, the Central Texas Herencia Foundation, and Pearls of Service Foundation of Central Texas.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
That's the motion.
Well, Madam Mayor, I have one, one comment before the motion is that, again, this is, this has been truly, truly been one of my most memorable meetings that I've had. I've had the opportunity to, to really acknowledge a person who's well-deserving. We've had great updates from our chief on, on the state of the fire. And with this, what I was able to do as far as bring forth some funding for some very needy, necessary, and qualified and deserving organizations out there. So this is our final round of this as, as we wrap this up. But it's been a pleasure to be able to see this actually, see some of the, some of the things that came out of the money that we were able to give to the other, other grantees. So with that, it's, it's my honor to make the motion to approve RS 23063.
Okay, thank you. Second, we have a motion and second, all in favor, yes, all opposed, no, well, all in favor, raise show of hand. One, two, that's seven. Motion carries. And I would hope that as we move forward in the future, when we discuss the budget, that we look at ways to continue to give, to open doors for other nonprofits and also small businesses that would want to give back to the community. So I am truly excited about all the organizations that did receive funding, go out and do great With that being said, Madam Secretary, public hearing.
PH 23017, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase expenditure accounts in the-
Madam Secretary, we have to stop the meeting until Councilwoman Cobb return. And the reason we're stopping the meeting because we have four council members and the mayor, you have to have four at all times. And three, the three that's on Zoom do not count. They can vote, but they have to be present in order for us to have a quorum. So we will wait until Councilwoman Cobb return. Five-minute break. This is our last item. We're ready to go home. If we can get the other two council members, council member.
This is our last one.
Yep, but you missed me on two because I forgot the thing wasn't working. I didn't want to say.
Oh. I don't know. We just need one more. We need one more council member. Oh, she went back there talking. Councilwoman Gonzalez, we on our last item.
She's in the room.
We can go home, they can spend time with their families.
I switched it out.
Oh, thank you. Oh, yes, so much better. Look how high this is. No, we'll move on. That's as high as you go?
Madam Secretary, we now have a quorum.
PH 23017, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase expenditure accounts in the street maintenance fund. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the city of Colleen, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Colleen, Texas, amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase expenditure accounts in the street maintenance fund, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing a savings clause, and establishing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. There's no questions for Mrs. Drake because she went through the slides last week. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Public hearing is open. I have no form. Public hearing is closed. Mayor Protem.
Madam Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
Okay. It's been a motion and second. Did you get that cigar? All in favor, raise your right hand, yes. Motion carries, seven to zero. A motion to adjourn? All in favor? Have a good night, meeting adjourned.
Hey.